The match day, traffic, noise, pollution, anything else that goes into the game. So I think this plan, and I know a lot of people said about consultation, and I've heard from Liverpool on the long years through football committees, and there's certainly always a noise we with Liverpool Football Club and other agencies, when they say consultation, they sort of about websites, a lot of people got access to that sort of information. So I think when you talk about consultation with the residents, it's going to be too meaningful consultation, where you have to go out, sit meetings, and have to inform residents. So I think that's something that needs to be thought about within the planning. Well, as I say, the respite is key to a lot of people coming in our stadium, they feel as though we're not going to get it. Now, I know it's a small window of opportunity for Liverpool that they talk about, but I do think that needs to be in mind for the local residents of that area, that that is a couple of months later, from home or abroad, and therefore fearful that all this is planned and permissioned, that that will be so. Many of those who are staying in the coast three hours before, and with the traffic world, air traffic plan, it does cause a lot of issues for local residents, and I can certainly say that this myself. One of the things that's been identified is the new Weymouth Centre, about to be developed, between Houghton Street and Weymouth Street. A lot of the publicity self-rescuing, the top part of the street, needs 24 hour access for health and support services, and access for allowances, therefore an extension of the current strategy plan. We will place some of the local residents at risk for a longer amount of help and well-being. That needs to be considered, and that covered there, so hopefully that will be covered in the planning director. And another point which you've also got to consider, and we have time to address this with councillors and football fans, is the behaviour of some of the people attending a football match. And it is appalling, there's no other way to describe it, very small number of people.
Councillor, could you draw your remarks?
Of course, no. So I think the residents are fearful that they're going to experience the impact that comes to match day, day experiences, bikes through the summer. So I think that's something the planning committee have got to bear in mind, and I don't think Liverpool can Friday also address these concerns for our local residents, certainly in Anfield.
Councillor Adel, darling, and then councillor Mary, and then councillor speaker.
I'm going to raise all the steps because Ian from the Everton board has pointed out quite a lot of them. The main ones is, I have had a number of checks and sent to me from Anfield residents. I've also received comments from residents who feel they're further away from the football ground. Residents are not firmly concerned about the noise and pollution, these extra programmes operating throughout the year, but the usual concerns, one being parking, the inconvenience of buses having to change their normal routes, and the worries if their parking space outside their own properties is still there for them to park in. Residents feel if we're going into this planning application, they will lose the rest of the year to the above problems. As a councillor, there are still the same old issues that I discussed at every meeting I attend. We have been told it will be the same regulations that now apply for football matches. They have not been resolved, so it will still be the same as it is now, residents having to suffer the consequences. At every meeting I ask about the parking ride, the reply is we still are looking into this. In fact, this application is successful. But I feel, I think that if you study, it won't completely resolve the issues, but it will certainly help over time. Other issues that are continually brought to my attention are why can't LFC have extra facilities, bins, and security? I ask you, LFC, as good neighbours, and respect the residents' comments, that this is for parking, noise, pollution, facilities, bins, and extra security be there available for them. Thank you.
Councillor Mary.
Where do we start? It has been stated by Liverpool FC officials that noise level will be no louder than a match day. Well, I'm just a few hundred yards away from the ground, a bit further than Rory does, and I know on match days, I can certainly hear when Liverpool go very close to scoring the goal, and definitely hear when they do score the goal. The Anfield anthem on stadium shows is also here, hundreds of yards away. So what would noise levels be like for people living just on and around the ground? Paul McCartney held a concert there 10 years ago, there were a number of complaints to come in from residents living showcoats for the ground, saying they couldn't even hear their own telly because the death level was so high. These matters need to be addressed and addressed urgently for these 10 concerts to go ahead. This could go on, this noise level also could go on till 11 o'clock in the evening, and then it takes another hour to clean up all the stage and everything else that needs to be moved, so you're talking about midnight before the noise levels, you'll finish completely. Parking is also a very big issue on match day. Residents are trapped in their properties for four hours, unable to get in or out due to traffic regulations and road congestion. Many residents with blue badges or parking pads are scared to go out because their places are taken by fans coming in to watch the game. This has also led to heated arguments and on the other occasion, fisty cups between fans and residents who live there. All the signs around the residents' parking zone are marked up, orders to make, this will have to be changed to allow, if these concerts are to go ahead. Due to the cups, as we know, Liverpool City Council, the number of traffic waters available are not as many as they were. They try as much as they can to blip a certain area on every home game and every, but there's many getting away. These people just park up outside to a mock house, they don't mind getting fined because there's four of five of them in a car, and they're happy to pay the fine. This cannot continue. Make the fine bigger or find another way to look after the residents' parking. It is only going to get worse as the capacity is likely to increase in Anfield in the coming years, which I won't go on about now. Anfield area is full to saturation point on match day, with vehicles coming to see events in Anfield, and the only people stopping are the local residents.
Councillor, could you draw your remarks?
Yeah, there's also matters that I'd like to bring up regarding litter. Litter has still been addressed by the lady to say that more may be compelled. Poor to lose, urinating in people's gardens at match days and in alleys is not on. Liverpool have not addressed these issues for match days. The head of planning says these can be mitigated in with what the current plans are now. Let me just say, these current plans are not working. Thank you.
I'll be very grateful if somebody else at the council will raise any points, but can I say, slightly said for them, it's not just Anfield residents who are impacted by the congestion, the football strategy has displaced a lot of the car parking problems, and large parts of Breckford Park, larger parts of Nuchan Park, are equally congested and residents blocked in. So the dissipation hasn't solved the problem, it's spreading. But can I be positive? When we, and some of our friends here, will be projected to be in buildings on Stanley Park, and one of the terrific achievements we did making sure it happened, I thank them here for it. When we were being sold the new LFC grounds, I have to say the building looks magnificent, and the investment is magnificent, and this is about giving more income generation to LFC, we know what that's about. But let's be honest, when are we going to see the promises made at the very first initial consultations, and we were talked about parking rights schemes, and we were told about possibly reopening the route branch line? Because that would give people a positive alternative, but wouldn't involve traffic congestion and traffic pollution. We all know the consequences of air pollution are becoming a point of bigger public concern, but it's not mentioned in the reports. We deserve better, we deserve better, and if LFC are going to get advantage of greater income generation, and I'm not against that, then it's time to have that reinvested in improving the facilities for public transport, so we don't have congestion. There are positive things that can be done, and they should be done first.
Thank you for all our councillors. Now, we now have seven people coming for the talk chat, and I really appreciate it. If you keep your remarks as quick as possible, and make your points different points, not all speaking on the same points, please. So can I invite first of all Nicola Cotter to come forward?
I'd like to be raised and support what our councillors have said about the environment's impact, the traffic impact, and the impact on our environment. As a resident who lives in St George's, I am directly behind Liverpool's football ground. I have two children, but the match day traffic already affects in terms of keeping up late at night because of the noise level, and because of fans and their inability to conduct themselves correctly in a residential area. We've seen in the past 12 months, we've seen them nationally on news, the inability to deal with the, at the European Games, the sheer volume of fans that were there. I was actually frightened in my own room, and as someone who's lived in the Anfields area all of my life, I can say that's never happened to me before, but those two European Games really, really scared me and my children. We deal with, to make access into our house, we deal with not only the parties and weddings, and, you know, they go on till two o'clock in the morning, and I hear them, you know, I'm at home, I'm with my children, because my husband wakes up at midnight, and that already affects my quality of life. During the, our respite from August to, even later, the season starts in August, that is the only respite we have, and I just don't want that taken away from us. I do believe DNA there is the letters that we receive from Liverpool Football Club, DNA there, a no is a no.
Please, Nicola Cotter come forward, followed by Celia Clare, and then Ray Beaton. If you wouldn't mind coming up a bit nearer for you, and then one other time speak. So could Celia and Ray come as well at the moment?
Good morning. I speak as a resident who lives close to the football ground, and I'm really concerned that Anfield does not have the infrastructure to cope with all these extra events, and it's mine to say that the plans are in place for football match days, but they don't work. We suffer through match after match. I think there's particular issues with things like access, both for those who live in the area and for those who want to travel into it. There's congestion, there's parking issues. The council before then mentioned the need for residents' parking permits to be addressed when this application goes through. There's inadequate public transport. Buses have stopped, and will not stop at certain stops for as much as 90 minutes before some games, but for a considerable period of time afterwards. So I also think the other issues that we want to have in this, like the music festivals, the additional school, we've got to look at things like the impact of alcohol or crowd behaviour, how they behave as they leave the stadium. We've heard how they urinate against people's halls, how there's fights, the breath of behaviour, these are intolerable if you're a resident of the city, and a resident of Anfield. And you feel more and more that Anfield is an area in decline. We're suffering, it needs work done, all these issues need addressing, there's litter, there's noise. And I know that many of these issues have been raised, but I really hope that both the football ground, that they need to think about going back to the area that they live. We've had plan after plan, mess after mess, sort of in terms of roads being left to go down it. And we really need, Liverpool need to be back, as well as take from us. So I hope that both the football company and the city council will take the concerns and the negative impact that this has on our lives very seriously. Thank you.
Nicola Cotter, please.
Good morning. I live in Red High Ground, I'm more reverent, and I can assure you that the traffic management is not working. Because as soon as they open the roads again, 15 minutes after the crowds go in, people park up waiting to pick relatives and friends from around, and they haven't sat there and nobody moves, so it's definitely not working. I don't know if anyone's realised just how much it affects the people in this area, and there's only one model to check what Liverpool Football Club are playing in this season. It's not just the Premier League, there's four other competitions they're in, so that means four extra nights a week when we can't even relax. They want the screening of the away matches, so that's another match that they're having. No away match has been, you know, screened, so we get, oh, thank God, we can go out today, but no, we can't because they're going to get the crowds in to watch the football on the big match screen, which is wrong because we need the break. I mean, I'd do like it if you were sat in your living room, not even beers, F this, F that. It's not very nice. Now, there is something about the nice little Paul Grant concert. Now, I had a neighbour, she's that's the woman, and she said, after that concert, when those fireworks go and torches flash, she'll live the lights again. Now, I don't know about you, but this lovely weather, people have the windows open, now how many times have you been disrupted by a cargo mass blasting their music out? That lasts a few minutes at the most, but you imagine having to put up with that for two, three hours. That's not acceptable, and Liverpool Football Club should be ashamed of themselves wanting people to do that. In fact, previous concerts held at LFC have contravened noises and stuff that she used in that since 1983, every time they've contravened it. It's just not acceptable because since 2004, Liverpool FC have got everything they wanted, the neighbourhood's gone down because Liverpool Football Club are the big old end goal, and that's what anyone can say is concerned about. They don't care about the residents, it's just Liverpool Football Club and the money that they can bring in for them off the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Frank, I'm from Priory area, Restful Association, so I have a sensible proportion of residents of the other area. My main objections have been to the parking, the amount of cars coming into the area, couple parking problems for all residents, they can't even sort of, well, they fear going out during the match or during match day because they won't be able to get back to their parking space. Talks about alternative ways of transport to the ground have been talked about for five years to my knowledge, and nothing has happened about the loop line or any reasonable alternative that has been taken up by any of the supporters. Also, I'd like to point out, the number of cars coming into the area and going after the area after a match or after an event is causing ridolf on the streets. But an hour beforehand, so two hours after the match or after the event, you can't move around Anfield. It's taken me two hours to do a, a sort of 15 minute journey before I, to get out, to get somewhere then. Okay, that's all I want to say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Matt Cotter, Angela McKay, and George McCurn to come forward. Can we start with Matt addressing the committee, please?
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Committee. I'm a local resident who lives on Stanley Park, and again, when we bought our house 13 years ago, my wife had long been in the area, and been to a couple of matches, so I sort of expected what to be on last day. Gradually over the years, it's got worse and worse, where again, roads get closer to the area, it's getting impossible to even get out of the road. But not only that, the level of noise, the level of pollution, litter, everything, and I know Liverpool Football Club can send difficult messages in to try and help and that sort of things, but as the residents have said, it's not working, things seem to be getting worse, actually, the better. When you've got people actually urinating against your front door, and when you go out to challenge them to move them on, it becomes threatening. And again, that's the traffic cones, I was trying to reserve, I was trying to keep our own parking space, and again, some madness idiots taking them and throwing them, or eating them as frisbees, and it does become frightening, especially when you've got children in the house. But apart from those points, we live there 12 months a year. Now, again, when we bought our house, we started not knowing that the football season went on and finished. If Liverpool Football Club get access to being able to hold those sports events, another consequence, during that time, when it is our best place for the people, as you've those words, that is a quiet time for us throughout the year for our residents and Christmas parties and things to go as well, and again, they want it all hours with extra noise and extra things to go on, and it can't be quite the same. If those sports events and concerts come on, it's just going to add to that, and when do we get rest as being local residents? There was one friend who pointed to this, that, again, I don't know the main reason is talking about the noise, but since the new stand was actually built, the level of noise coming over onto those on the schedule stand is actually worse, simply because it must be hidden, because the stand is higher, it's elevating out, so again, that's going to even add to the more levels of noise about concerts or the sports events. Thank you.
After me and Chair, Commissioner, and local people, I bought my house 28 years ago, and as everybody says, the match has changed, we all know that through the TV and sponsorship and that, but we don't expect, if you're not a football fan, you never know when there's a match. Years ago, you'd be able to say Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday night, now, you never ever know when there's a match going to be on, it's a Monday night, it's Friday night, there's no, there's just no bar that you can plan around, you know, you go out to work, and someone might mention to you, oh, there's a match, and you look at the turn, you can, I've been here since half seven, and I'm going to have to wait until half six before I can get in the, in the road because I'm not going to be allowed in. So it's all things like that. The lady from planning, eh, planning spoke about the transport for the fans, but no mansion of residents, you know, when there's a match on, you know, if you're coming out from work, you're stuck, if you're in the city centre, if you don't go for the traffic signal or that, you're stuck getting the 17 bus. There is no one implementing, fans not getting on the main 17, they're not going to the transport, so the fans' bus. So that needs addressing, that needs to be marshalled, it needs, you know, you're going to, you know, I can say, I think everybody else has said, a long St George's Road next to an engine, I've got two young men in my house, you know, regardless of Everton supporters, and that years ago, you know that, because they would always, away when Everton were up, but now, because of the way the fixtures are, that I know, and the government was arguing with men who were, who were disrespectful to me because I have questioned that, the urinating on the, on the alleys. Now, I didn't expect that, I expected some respect, you know, I was in daylight, talking to a 90, 91 year old resident, and two men in broad daylight walked up and urinated and, and they're like, actually, excuse me, and it's like, so Liverpool Football Club, I've got to, I've got to address this, because it's really, really an embarrassment, I think, of residents of Anfield, I think, just a local person in Liverpool, that there's no chance he's whatsoever, you know, I understand that the people have travelled and had drink, but again, we've got the weddings, we've got the Christmas parties, you know, again, with the concerts and things like that, it's more the alcohol that's going to be consumed, as Mike can say, when they're going in, when they're coming out, when the stewards, who's going to be steward, steward, you know, to get, to disembark from around the area? So every one of us, and I want people to understand, no, anyone who lives in Anfield, I mean, it's up to them in Anfield because I bought our estate, but what we, you know, we've had this for years and years now, Liverpool Football Club saying this, that, and the other, regardless of how many pounds of people in, but we need somebody to show us that if this does not, I don't understand, Angela, you're trying this on, yeah, so I'd like to call on her, on George, and let Angela do it.
Hi, I'm George, I've been from Stanley Park, the society's been going, Anfield here since 1980. They, as we all know, they're a little bit, they're a monthly, they're a big, big impact on people. They really don't care about the people that are there, they don't just for the fact, they just, just, you know, they give them all the money for a side, they don't actually be supporters, so they definitely don't be fair to local people. So, you know, we'll listen to caution about how Liverpool don't be local people, it's a little, it's a little crap, really, because all they're going to do is do what they want to do, and hopefully you lot will listen to what these local people are saying, and if you don't believe, we've got them to make it happen.
Excuse me now, George, but not you lot, the planning committee, have you got your questions correctly, please?
The planning committee, to go and stop houses for these people that live there, and let them have a good season and see what it's like. These actual, excellent things are going to come on. Once they get in, they'll extend it, they get these 10 day, these 10 extra day events, they'll extend it. We all know, once that theory ends for a few years, then everyone's going, oh yeah, Liverpool, Liverpool are doing this, they're not, we all know they're not doing that. They're just thinking the money, local people are getting on, all the shops around the area, George shot on Saturday, George shot at the match on, the only thing they're open are little cat chickens and little pups, and then that's what happens, they're on journey and drop the list everywhere. The park has actually been, since stadium actually started, once they had the other park, which you'd all agree on, which you'd have, the planning committee, all agreed on, which you'd have, since then, we've lost the tennis courts, we've lost the leagues, we've lost the chits, the park, good comeback, the kind of things, started in cities apart, the actual animals that live there, there was a match on, people going, oh yeah, well, you know, Liverpool scored a goal, it's a bonus. If they're playing concerts, that noise is going to be going on, all night, things like bats in that room, where the hell do they go? You know, people might laugh, oh yeah, bats, but you know, if you've got the noise going on for like three, four hours constantly, not just for the goal, but constantly, it's going to affect the animals in there, it's going to affect the light, the light situation is going to be disrupted, it's going to go on till twelve o'clock, eleven, twelve o'clock in the morning, the noise and the pollution is going to be extra, it's going to go on. Like we said, there's going to be the Alfry Mount, there's going to be the free between May and August, there'll be a free, free time, I've been saying about it 26 years, when there's a match on, you can't get there, please, when there's a match on, if you go to the park, and the residents have the car, you want to share. When there's a match on, if you want to play a park in the Red and Celtic car, if you want to charge ten quid, and you can go and visit the park, you can not visit the park. If you want to go and visit Stanley Park as a match on, only if you're a resident, you'd be able to go to it. If you want to go in the city centre to go and visit Stanley Park, English, that's English, hello, you spend sixteen million pounds, you're all off and back. If you're here, you're bloody bored, you're all over. You can get there, you can get a poster, a poster for France. You can, you can, it gets to all around, George, you can back on to Stanley Park. People are going to sell their envelopes, seven, eight, you can't visit there, you can't. The park is all about it.
Of course, George, you're on what? We're asked for completion now, George, but you have had your time.
Um, you should just say, where is the minutes? Where is the minutes?
You've now three minutes.
Yeah, it's two.
Anytime you can.
It's two, so three, three minutes.
It's three minutes combined, and you've now had three hours.
And my question is, if you're agreeing on this, it's a sad day because they will extend, they extend, Liverpool Football Club are vows, all they need to take, 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 give them back. Thank you.
I'm going to hand over now to our planning officer to answer some of these points. But I think we should make it clear that there are two separate applications here.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll go on to that in a moment in terms of proceedings, I'm here, will you kind of raise some additional procedural points? There's a comment from Council of Corvus, who just asked to make it clear that in representations which are, have been circulated on the update notes, that after the broken down Mercedes-Benz fire rescue service, should we, should therefore, good, a major obligation to be any expansion, like increasing the numbers and major base in the region, such as a number of points you've made there. And second point on height is the councillor, Al Dowling, again, as made in late representations that were included in your update notes, they actually referred to both applications, so item five and item six, and not as in your note, just in relation to item six. In relation to both applications, Chair, you'll see that the overall numbers of objections haven't been included in the papers. So the clarification, there's been a total of thirty-five representations in relation to item five, a total of fifty-six representations in relation to item six. And then finally, Chair, again, if you are minded to grant planning permission for both of the applications, there are a number of changes that are needed to conditions.